Chair.
All rise. Oh, yes and yes, this County Commission meeting in Southern County is now open pursuant to adjournment. God bless this country and this honorable commission. Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. While we're standing, we have Pastor Kim Shaw, who is from the Trinity Lutheran Church in 720 Lot 4 Road here in Gallatin. He served as pastor of Trinity Evangelical Lutheran Church in Gallatin since 2005. He previously served in the Missouri Senate as evangelistic missionary, theological educator, and pastoral counselor to the Lutheran Church in Guatemala. He received his Master of Evangelical degree from Concordia Seminary in Fort Wayne, Indiana. Pastor Shaw and his wife Stacy have two daughters, Melissa and Christina. Pastor Shaw, thank you.
Thank you. Please join me in prayer. In the name of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit, amen. Almighty God, Creator of heaven and earth, we praise and thank you for the abundant mercy that you have so richly provided us, not only with daily bread for our bodies, but also heavenly food for our souls. Grant that your living and powerful word may abide in our hearts, working mightily in us to your glory and our salvation. You have given us this good and bountiful land. Grant that we remember your generosity and constantly act according to your holy and divine will. Bless our communities with honest industry, truthful education, and an honorable way of life. Keep us from violence, discord, and division, from pride and arrogance, and from every form of evil. Bless the families of our communities, protect and guide them. We also ask that you guide all those who serve our communities, policemen, firemen, emergency and utility workers, and those who serve in our military. Guide and bless them, watch over their families, especially those who are deployed. From you come all authority, and the world has authority to punish the evildoers, but also to praise those who live peaceably. We especially pray this evening that you would graciously guide those who have been elected to positions of authority, that they may be directed by your word and spirit to act according to your holy will. Give each of them wisdom necessary to faithfully perform their duties and responsibilities. Guide them in the work that is brought before them this evening, so that they may serve their constituents faithfully and fairly. Guard the lips of those who are gathered here also, so that all that is said may indeed be spoken in love, out of concern for others in mind, keeping all anger, hatred, and discord far from us. Move each of us, your servants, to defend the freedom and liberties of all citizens, remembering the weak, the vulnerable, especially the unborn, the widowed, and the aged. Receive our prayers this day, which we offer to you in the name of your beloved Son, Jesus Christ, who lives and reigns with you in the Holy Spirit. One God, thou and forever. Amen.
Thank you, sir. Now here remain standing for our pledge of allegiance led by Mr. Kemp.
I pledge allegiance to the Father, and the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. Mr. Langford, could you call the roll of police? Roll call's now open. This Commissioner, please, for your presence. Mr. Chairman, we have 24 members present. Thank you, sir. We have a full body tonight. Approval of the regular agenda and consent agenda. There is, under report of the chair, item C. Ms. Ashley, the administrator of elections, we're going to move her to the legislative committee so that she can discuss that. There is a proposal in the legislative committee, and she will be here to share that information with us, and we will do that then. Mr. Langford, do you have something you need to add?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. We need to let the notes reflect it. It's on everyone's desk. It's the report on debt obligation from County Finance Manager. It's a, we've already approved the bonds, but this is something that's required for us to give information about what was going on with about how many dollars were approved earlier for architectural fees and other items.
Okay. Was there something else about the parks?
Yes, and then we need to add, there's a resolution on everyone's desks. It's a resolution for to create a adventure tourism district. We need to add that as well.
Okay. All right. Anything else you didn't need to add? There's been a motion. Anybody else is our second? All in favor say aye. All right. We have an agenda. Approval of minutes for February the 23rd, 2015. Is there a motion? Accept motion?
Second.
Second. Or Mr. Graves. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
We have approved the minutes. Recognition of the public. At this time of the meeting, we allow the public to come up and speak. Let me share with you that this will be something that is on the agenda. You may speak with something on the agenda. We ask that you sign up, and when you come up, you'll have five minutes. Mr. Kemp will keep the time, and with 30 seconds to go, he will let you know that there's 30 seconds left. And we ask that you not say anything inflammatory toward the Commissioner, towards an elected official, towards citizens, towards our candidates tonight. And there has been some question about, could someone speak for a candidate? The answer to that is yes, because it is on the agenda. So is there anyone else out there who would like to sign up? The Chair will bring that to you. Okay, Chair. Anyone else? Thank you. We ask too, that when you come forward, if you will give us your name and your address. Judge Jim Hunter. Judge Hunter, with a big smile on his face.
My name is Jim Hunter. I live at 1004 Harris Drive here in Gallatin. I'm here to speak just very briefly about the election of the new General Sessions Judge. I want to thank you for taking this process seriously. You have put a lot of time into this, as well as you should have, but as a result, you have a very good slate of candidates to fill this very important position. I know it takes a lot of money to create a new court. That may have been one of the problems over the years, and it does take a lot of money. I don't dispute that. But our county has grown considerably in the last 11 years. And by creating this new court and appointing a new judge, this will help us to efficiently manage our caseload, and it will position us to effectively manage the caseload well into the future. And I want to thank you for what you're doing.
Judge Hunter, before you leave, I just want to tell you that for me, and I hope I'm speaking from behalf of this commission, we appreciate the job that you do, and we know that it has been a challenge for you these last few years, and that now we're going to give you some relief. And we do appreciate you have gone above and beyond.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Caleb? Yeah, well, how do you say that?
Savitsky.
Savitsky, okay. There you go. Yeah, you may need to spell that for us.
S-A-W. It's all right.
Still speaking of the microphone.
My name is Caleb Savitsky. I live at 2508 Epperson Springs in Westmoreland, Tennessee. Long story short, I've been doing a revitalization project of the Westmoreland Lake, and I know tonight Mr. Mo Taylor is asking for a fishing rodeo for the children in the area, and we're trying to clean up Westmoreland and revitalize the area through many different projects right now, but this is just one that will help out the public a lot, so if you would please stand with him tonight on that, I'd appreciate it greatly.
Sir, thank you, but I do not believe that's on the agenda this evening, and so I talk to Mr. Taylor. Mr. Taylor said it is not, so we definitely will be coming.
Well, my apologies. I don't feel kind of silly.
That's okay. All right. Is there anyone else that would like to speak this evening? If not, then, and then we'll declare the public recognition over. Next is report of the chair. Let me just, let me point out that, and I think all of you have received an invitation, this Friday coming up, March 20th, from 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m., there's going to be a luncheon in an open house for the Tennessee College of Applied Technology in the Portland Campus, that's the Portland Vocational School that is opening up. They were supposed to have done this a couple of weeks ago, and I think the weather caught them, so now we're doing that again. I think Mr. Gendin will be, will be cooking the lunch. He's not cooking the lunch, but there will be a lunch available, and so you're all invited to that, and that is some exciting news. I think that's going to really help not only the northern part of Southern County, but all of Southern County, so we appreciate the efforts on that. We have a letter here from the Southern County Museum that was sent to Mr. Hope that I need to share, just our thanks go to you and the County Commission for the $50,000 toward the purchase of the carriage house. Your support is greatly appreciated, and that's Juanita Fraser, who is the treasurer, so I just wanted to read that. Also too, on your desk, there is a brochure, and also a package, and that is from the UT Extension Institute of Agriculture. They are here in Southern County, they had an open house today. Hopefully some of you got to go by to that, but they just have that on your desk so that show their appreciation of what this commission does for them, and to provide some information about UT Extension and what they have done for Southern County. Mr. Bob Arrie, who is the executive director, Mr. Arrie, you want to stand up with your staff, and we just appreciate you guys being here this evening, and thank you for your help here in Southern County. And now, certificates of recognition. Mr. Mike Akins will be coming forward to honor Kristen Lee. Is Kristen here? Kristen? Come on down, and bring your family with you, or whomever you want to bring. Four friends, whatever.
We were at a gathering in Westmore a couple of weeks ago, and just as we were set to begin, I heard a commotion behind me, and I looked around, and a guy was laying there at a lightness, I mean, no pulse, no sign of life whatsoever. And I took CPR a little short course 40 years ago. When they asked if anybody knew it, I went blank. She went to work. And if she hadn't, Westmoreland would be one less, with one less resident tonight. She saved his life, there's no question about that. There was no pulse, no sign of life till she got done with it. And we saw fit to pass this resolution to honor you for your act of kindness and bravery, and reads like this. Whereas Miss Kristen Lee, owner of Lighthouse Learning Center in Westmoreland, Tennessee, helped save the life of a local gentleman by administering CPR, and whereas on February 24th, just before the local board meeting, a man suffered cardiac arrest and collapsed, Miss Lee, realizing that someone had to administer CPR, rushed to the aid and worked diligently to resuscitate him, and whereas Miss Lee, who credited God for saving the gentleman's life, exemplifies the highest standard of compassion and kindness, and is someone who should be commended for exceptional efforts to help a fellow citizen in need. Now whereas, now therefore, be it resolved by the Southern County Board of County Commissioners meeting in regular session on this, the 16th day of March 2015, that this body does commend Miss Kristen Lee for her efforts and compassion, and be it further resolved that this resolution is to be spread on the minutes of this body, and the clerk is to furnish a copy of this resolution to Miss Kristen Lee. I so move, Mr. Chairman.
We have Mr. Akins, we have a second by Mr. Mo Taylor. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, now we get to the point of the agenda that some of us have been looking forward to, not only for the last few weeks and months, but for several years, and that is the election of a new General Sessions Judge. Let me say that, first of all, all the candidates who have put your name out there, we appreciate you doing that. This has been a very difficult decision for me, and I think it has been for the other commissioners too. We are very fortunate that we have so many well-qualified people who are willing to step up and affect on that responsibility. And we will go through the voting procedure tonight. We're going to talk about what we're going to do here in just a minute. Let me just say though, that once this is over, whomever is elected, in the next few days, the County Attorney and I will be meeting with you to sit down and see what we can do about coming up with a plan to put, to implement your move into that position. We will have to set up dates, we'll have to talk about staff, we'll have to talk about the various things that go together in putting a General Sessions Court room together, so we will, we will be doing that, so that we can try to get this accomplished as quickly and efficiently as possible. Let me just share with you, I want to make sure, I know I'm chairman, maybe I'm supposed to make decisions, but I want to make sure that we do all this as a body. We have talked about the election process and how we would do the election process, and we sent rules out, hopefully you all received those rules, about rules for election of a General Sessions Judge position. I hope that you have studied that, because we would anticipate there will be more than one vote, and so we wanted to make sure that we all understood, before we get into the election process, what the rules were. So you have looked at this, you have studied this. Are there any questions or any comments that anyone would like to make? I'm not going to read all those out. We sent them to the candidates too, so they're familiar with it, but are there any questions about how we're going to go through each of the votes, depending on how many? And let's see, Ms. Kruger, you are in the queue.
I'm just curious, is there, we can change this. We don't have to do it this way? Is that correct?
If you want to make a motion to change this, then we can certainly do this. Yes, ma'am. If there's something you want to add to this, we could do this.
I'd just prefer to see us do our first vote by paper ballot, even if it's got our names on it.
We're going to talk about that in just a minute. Let's make sure we get this procedure. Thank you. But we're going to, we're going to address that, okay? All right, is there anything on this? If not, I need a motion from the floor that we will approve, and then we're going to do a voice vote. We're going to approve the rules for election of General Sessions Judge position. Is there a motion? Oh, wait a minute, hold this, some people in the queue. Okay, Mr. Vaughn?
I understand. I think, I think Mr. Palmer is going to ask the same thing I am.
You go ahead.
Well, I understand. Numbers, but you're talking about on the paper ballots also, is that right?
No, we're going to talk about that. We're going to talk about, we're just talking about how we go through the election. We're going to come back in a minute on how we're going to do the voting.
Okay, so what we're voting on is just the numbers, and I, it doesn't have anything about the paper ballot.
No, it does not have anything. I don't think it has, I don't think so. It does not, okay? So, any other questions? Anybody? Nobody else is in the queue? All right. So we have, who made the motion to do this? Mr. Goode made the motion, is there a second? Second for Mr. Rain. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign? Okay, that sounds unanimous. So we now have a, we know that now. The next thing, which a couple of you have already asked, is the voting procedure. There have been at least two discussed on what we can do. Let me throw these out to you, and then we can ask for a motion. But one of them is that we would have on the board, I think we did this a couple of weeks ago, we showed you a couple of weeks ago on the board, and then we would go through, and we would start with District 1, and we would call out the commissioners from each district, and they would tell us who they wanted, and Mr. Kemp would put that into the computer, which would show on the board up here, and we would go through there, and it would tally as we go through. The second thing has been that we do this by paper ballot. Let me tell you that Mr. Kemp and his staff have put a lot of effort into the paper ballot, because we had discussed doing a paper ballot. They are so organized that they have an envelope for everybody. I'm not trying to push one way or the other, but I just want you to know for yourself. But they have organized this, and it's color-coded, with each commissioner's name on there, and the first round, depending on how many rounds we get to, and I think, how many are in here? We can go through seven rounds if we need to. However, once we get down to three, then we can put it on the board, because there are three buttons in front of it, and we won't have to do the paper ballot. All right. Mr. Vaughn, we have a motion, and Mr. Goode, we have a second. All in favor of, your motion is to paper ballots, thank you. All right, all in favor of doing paper ballots, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Mr. Taylor, anybody else? Yeah, and thank you for doing that. We will still, what we will do is, we will give out the package to you, then we will vote. They'll be collected, they'll be brought to me, I will read them out with your name. It's not going to be a secret ballot, and we will read those out, and then he will put it in the computer, and we will still be able to use the program that he put together, so that we can keep up with it. So at this point now, the staff will be handing out these. Make sure that you get the right ballot, make sure you get the name, that your name is on that ballot. And I want to thank Mr. Kemp and his staff for organizing this. It's color-coded, Chair. Okay, does everyone have their package? Does everyone have your package? Okay, make sure your name is, it's like being in school again. Make sure your name is on there, that we got the right one, because your name will be read out. Now, the first one is blue. Number one, is at the top, is the blue one. If you will circle the name of the person that you would like to vote for, and then we will begin collecting those, as soon as you have finished. Just so the audience knows, as they collect these, just through the first vote, any candidate who receives no vote shall be removed from the slate. The candidate with the lowest vote total shall also be removed from the slate, and then we will, we will go from there. And you don't have to fold them, by the way. Takes a while. Okay, do we have all ballots? Any other ballots? All right, here we go. Alan Driver votes for Mr. Sutherland. Jerry Becker votes for Mr. Embling. Caroline Kruger votes for Mr. Sutherland.
Becker votes.
Okay. Becker voted for Embling. Driver voted for Sutherland. Caroline Kruger, Sutherland. Ready? All right. Larry Hinton, Hawkins. Joanne Kemp, Blanton. Okay, you got, you got Miss Kemp, okay. Merrill Hyne, Blanton. Chris Taylor, Sutherland. Chris Taylor votes Sutherland. Jerry Foster votes Carter. Jerry Foster. Jerry Foster votes Carter. Kevin Pomroy votes Carter. Carter. Jim Vaughn votes Blanton. Bob Postposel votes Embling. Paul Goode votes Carter. Trish Lamar votes Blanton. Scott Langford votes Carter. Mike Guthrie votes Carter. Leslie Schale votes Carter. Mo Taylor votes Carter. Baker Rine votes Embling. Billy Gendin votes Dusain. Steve Graves votes Boyers. Mike Akins votes Carter. Ben Harris votes Boyers. Bill Taylor votes Embling. Paul Decker votes Blanton. That's 24 votes. We have 24 votes in. Any commissioner wishing to change their vote? Any commissioner? The record is, Mr. Blanton receives five votes, Mr. Boyers receives two votes, Mr. Carter receives eight votes, Mr. Dusain receives one vote, Mr. Embling receives four votes, Mr. Hawkins receives one vote, Mr. Sutherland receives three votes. Okay, so based on our rules, we will delete the two low-vote getters, which would be Dusain and Hawkins. Okay, Mr. Dusain and Mr. Hawkins would be eliminated. And then we will now go to round two. So that means that you need to mark those two off of your ballot, please. Okay, and for the audience, the second vote, if there's more than one candidate with the lowest vote total, all those candidates with the low vote total will be removed from the slate unless a motion is made, seconded, and passed by the commission to change that particular rule. So we will do the same process. The lowest person who receives votes this time will be dropped. Okay, do we have all ballots? Just for clarification, the first one to 13 wins, because it does take 13 votes. You ready? Okay, Mike Akins votes Carter. Akins, yes, sir. Alan Driver votes Sutherland.
Driver votes Sutherland.
Becker votes Embling.
Becker votes Embling.
Gendin votes Sutherland. Graves votes Boyers. Mo Taylor votes Carter.
Taylor votes Carter.
Caroline Kruger votes Sutherland. Baker Rine votes Embling. Ben Harris votes Carter. Bill Taylor votes Embling.
Taylor votes Embling.
Scott Langford votes Carter.
Langford votes Carter.
Jim Vaughn votes Blanton.
Vaughn votes Blanton.
Bob Postposel votes Embling.
Postposel votes Embling.
Kevin Pomeroy votes Carter.
Pomeroy votes Carter.
Jerry Foster votes Carter.
Foster votes Carter.
Chris Taylor votes Sutherland.
Chris Taylor votes Sutherland.
Merrill Hyde votes Blanton.
Kemp Vaughn, I've lost Mr. Hyde. Guthrie, this, I hate this. Hyde votes how?
Uh, Hyde voted Blanton.
Blant, Hyde votes Blanton, got it. He was hiding from me.
Hiding, okay. Trish Lamar votes Blanton.
Lamar votes Blanton.
Paul Goode votes Blanton.
Goode votes Blanton.
Leslie Schell votes Carter.
Schell votes Carter.
Michael Guthrie votes Carter.
Guthrie votes Carter.
Joanne Kemp votes Blanton.
Kemp votes Blanton.
Larry Hinton votes Carter.
Hinton votes Carter.
Paul Decker votes Blanton.
Decker votes Blanton.
All 24 votes are in. Does any commissioner wish to change your vote? Okay, uh, the, Mr. Blanton receives six votes, Mr. Boyers receives one vote, Mr. Carter receives nine votes, Mr. Embling four votes, Mr. Sutherland four votes. So.
Mr. Boyers.
By rule, Mr. Boyers will be excluded from the next ballot. Okay, we're now ready for ballot number three. Your green ballot. Same process through the third ballot, lowest vote total. All right, is there anyone else? Ready?
Yes, sir.
Joanne Kemp votes Blanton.
Kemp votes Blanton.
Larry Hinton votes Carter.
Hinton votes Carter.
Merrill Hyde votes Blanton.
Hyde votes Blanton.
Yes, sir.
Got it? All right, Scott Langford votes Carter.
Langford votes Carter.
Bob Postposel votes Carter.
Postposel votes Carter.
Kevin Pomeroy votes Carter.
Pomeroy votes Carter.
Jim Vaughn votes Blanton.
Vaughn votes Blanton.
Paul Goode votes Blanton.
Goode votes Blanton.
Trish Lamar votes Blanton.
Lamar votes Blanton.
Jerry Foster votes Carter.
Foster votes Carter.
Leslie Schell votes Carter.
Schell votes Carter.
Chris Taylor votes Carter.
Chris Taylor votes Carter.
Michael Guthrie votes Carter.
Guthrie votes Carter.
Bill Taylor votes Embling.
Bill Taylor votes Embling.
Baker Rine votes Embling.
Rine votes Embling.
Mo Taylor votes Carter.
Mo Taylor votes Carter.
Caroline Kruger votes Sutherland.
Kruger votes Sutherland.
Jerry Becker votes Embling.
Becker votes Embling.
Billy Gomenden votes Sutherland.
Gomenden votes Sutherland.
Steve Graves votes Carter.
Graves votes Carter.
Mike Akins votes Carter.
Akins votes Carter.
Ben Harris votes Carter.
Harris votes Carter.
Alan Driver votes Sutherland.
Driver votes Sutherland.
Paul Decker votes Blanton.
Decker votes Blanton.
Uh, Mr. Hyde? Okay, Mr. Hyde wants to change his vote to Carter.
Mr. Hyde.
Okay.
Changes his vote to Carter.
All right. Mr. Rine changes his vote to Carter.
Mr. Rine changes his vote to Carter. Any commissioner wishing to change their vote?
Any other changes? Okay.
The votes are recorded. Mr. Blanton receives five votes. Mr. Embling receives two votes. Mr. Sutherland receives 13 votes. Mr. Car, uh, thir, Mr. Sutherland receives three votes. Mr. Carter is elected with 14 votes.
Okay. Mr. Carter, would you like to come, would you like to say anything? I've never seen a lawyer that didn't. Now you're a judge.
Thank you, thank you. I first want to thank all of the county commissioners for your time and effort that you've put into this process. Many of you know that it's gone on from maybe June or July of last year. And it's been a long process, and I do think that you put a lot of effort into it, you thought through what you were doing here today. I want to thank all of the other candidates who were in the field, because, uh, they're a great bunch of guys. I work with them on a regular basis. I, I was honored to be in their company in this process. I want to thank all of my friends who are here today, who are here and supported me and have always supported me through all of the campaigns that I've run. Uh, everything that I've done in my life, I could always count on them to be there. Uh, I promise to serve Sumner County well. I will do my duty by law, uh, as the oath requires, and I look forward to working for you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, and just, I want to echo what you said earlier, but also, you mentioned thanks to Judge Ryan, I want to talk to that. Uh, he has, uh, been, in fact, I've just worked with, let me be first to say, congratulations to Judge Lett.
This has actually been going on not, uh, since the last few months, but six and a half years, and this is a, a great moment. The only other thing I want to add, so, because a lot of people will start asking this question, probably the press next, is kind of the next step. And just to add, Mr. Chairman, to your comments on the front end, that what we discussed in that meeting the other night, with, the other day with the Law Director, was that we would, uh, immediately go with, uh, Judge Lett Carter, uh, and sit down and talk about the next step, which will most likely, we are estimating to be July start date. That's obviously not in stone. Uh, went over this with, um, Judge Hunter, and he has been completely elated by that idea as well, and he wants it yesterday, uh, that we're going to do our best. And, uh, so, uh, thank you for the process, and Commissioner Schell for, uh, the, the ballot process that has really gone through, uh, the way we did it, and I think it's, couldn't have been any better. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, sir. Uh, all right, now we're ready for item D, three-star report from the county, uh, executive. Uh, Mr. Hoag, you want to share that with us, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Tonight, you have before you information concerning three-star. This actually lays out physical strength and efficient government, physical confirmation letter, that is a three-star program requirement. I am requesting tonight that this information be included in the official minutes of this meeting. And, uh, I would, uh, ask that a commissioner, uh, make that in form of a motion, so we can continue our involvement in the three-star program. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer those.
Any questions? All right, we have a motion, Mr. Goode, is there a second?
Second.
Second from, uh, Mr. Graves, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
A poll light sign, let that show that we can handle. All right, uh, next on the agenda is a hearing on judicial magistrate program. And Madam Attorney's going to, uh, take care of that for us.
Annually, the judicial commissioners have to file a report. There's a copy in your packet. Um, these are the men and women that work 24/7 and set the bail and, um, keep the jail and everything, um, are the people being put in the jail, going in the right direction. Um, there was a public notice, any comments were supposed to be provided to our offices, we did not receive anything. Um, Todd Draper, who is the senior magistrate, along with several of the other magistrates are back there, they'd all weigh. Um, if you have any questions, they're here to answer them, otherwise, we'll sit down and shut up.
Okay, we need to do anything?
No.
Okay. All right, no questions? Okay, then we'll go to, uh, item D, approval of the consent, uh, agenda. Is there a motion? Motion for Mr. Akins, is there a second? Second for Mr. Postposel. Uh, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those who oppose, light sign. All right. Uh, report of county officials. Uh, that is on your desk, uh, and, uh, that is just for you, do we have to approve that? Just for your information. Put it in the record, thank you. Uh, notaries, public election, and surety bond, uh, approval. So now, at this point, we need to approve the, uh, the notaries. We have a motion for Mr. Rine, second for Mr. Pomeroy. It's on the board. Each question, please record your vote on double application. 23 votes are entered. Anyone not voting, wishing to vote, anyone wishing to change your vote? It is unanimous, Mr. Chairman. All right, we have approved that. Uh, reports of standing committees, uh, Mr. Goode, committee on committees?
No report, Mr. Chairman, we need next month.
No report. Uh, Mr. Lamar, education?
No report, we need next month.
Mr. Graves?
No report, Mr. Chairman.
Uh, general operations committee, Mr. Rine?
No report, Mr. Chairman.
Public service committee, uh, Mr. Bill Taylor?
No report, Mr. Chairman.
Emergency services committee, uh, Mr. Mike Guthrie? It's all right.
Mr. Chairman, we have a resolution, uh, that would authorize Sumner County to enter into an interim local agreement with the city of Portland to build a facility, uh, inside the city of Portland that would house Sumner EMS, uh, Sumner Emergency Management Agency, and Portland Fire Department. What this resolution would do, would authorize the county executive and law director to draft and endorse an agreement to build the fire and emergency facility inside the city limits of Portland. And also, in the budget, uh, committee, there will be a, um, a request for up to 1.15 million dollars, which would be half of the expected cost, uh, of the facility. Uh, the total cost of the facility would be shared with the city of Portland, and, uh, subsequently, part of the, uh, the draft, uh, and the agreement by both bodies, the city of Portland and Sumner County, then the operating cost would be shared. Uh, should say that this was also passed by the city of Portland, the city council last month, uh, to enter into this agreement, I so moved.
Okay, we have a motion, do we have a second? Second for Mr. Foster, discussion.
No question.
Mr. Hyde? Mr. Hyde, you were in the queue. Okay, Mr. Hyde popped up there.
Okay. I'm, I'm just wondering in whose name the deed will be written?
Uh, county attorney says both. To the city of Portland and to Sumner County.
Okay, and then the second question I have is, uh, will this possibly, uh, have we, have we discussed the possibility of other cities having their hand out to assist with building facilities? Because I know, for instance, in the city of Hendersonville, we house all three ambulances and fire halls. Have we discussed that?
Mr. Guthrie?
That has not been discussed in the emergency services committee. This came up because the city of Portland is in the process of building, uh, at least one fire hall, and now possibly two. Uh, this was just a matter of convenience for the city and the county to both save some money by splitting the cost, uh, to house their south fire department and our much-needed, uh, emergency medical station. Currently, the, uh, EMS station in Portland, which I believe is number six, uh, while we're very thankful for the, uh, the hospital in Portland for providing, uh, shelter basically for our EMS crew, for EMS crew and two ambulances, it's just not conducive to what, uh, to what we need for the ambulances. For, uh, an example, uh, one of the ambulances is in a, basically a shed that has, is not climate controlled, uh, which is, uh, terribly bad for, uh, the, uh, the medicines and the other, uh, things that are on the ambulances. They have to stick basically a space heater inside an ambulance front from an extension cord. Uh, and also, the living arrangements are, are not, uh, suitable for four crew members. Uh, therefore, like I said, this was just a matter of convenience, the city of Portland wanted to build a second fire hall, we needed a second, or a, a new, uh, EMS station, so this was, uh, this was brought up last month. Actually, this has been talked about for several years, uh, but, uh, we just started getting some ground on this last October, I believe.
Okay. Mr. Hyde, does that answer your question?
Yes.
Also, if I can point out, Mr. Chairman, uh, there is a, I believe a, uh, a federal law or a, a federal statute now that says that we're going to have to pay fair market value rent to the, uh, to the hospital in Portland, which, and I haven't seen any exact numbers, but I believe upwards of a thousand dollars, or somewhere around there, per month. Um, just, and not that there's any, any conflict of interest, or not that there's any, um, interpretation of anything negative going on there, but, uh, we are bound by law that we're going to have to start paying fair market value rent to the city, or to the, uh, the Portland hospital for rent for our EMS station up there.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Ms. Kruger?
I was curious about, you, you said approximate, of course, one and a half million. What happens if it goes over that? Where does that money come from, and do we have that budgeted somewhere?
We would have to come back and ask for more money. This was, uh, this was basically an estimate that was given by, I believe, the, uh, the architects and the, um, uh, the folks at Portland is using currently, uh, to build their, or in the planning stages of building their, uh, primary fire hall, which is on the north end of town. Uh, based on the square footage that was, that was presented, and the approximate value of construction per square foot, then it was estimated to be about 2.3 million dollars. So after that would be 1.15 million from the city of Portland and from, uh, Sumner County. We'd also like to point out that there is a possibility, a possibility of us receiving some grant money, uh, that would certainly apply for, that could offset this cost.
I, I, the only other thing I want to say is, I, I've been hearing this been talked about for a long time, like you said, years. So, I, I don't see any reason, when it's a safety and it's something that the city and the county can both utilize and split the expense, why we wouldn't do that, and share the expense, and save both the city and the county money?
Yes, ma'am.
Makes sense to me.
And also, the, the land that's proposed that we're going to put this on is, um, currently owned by the Board of Education. Uh, I've spoken with, uh, Dr. Phillips, a survey has been done by the city of Portland, that will be turned over to the Board of Education for them to vote on, to possibly donate that land back to the county, so the, there is virtually no cost for the, um, uh, for the land there for us to build upon.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Kruger? Is that it? Okay, uh, Mr. Rine?
Uh, yes, sir, a question for Mr. Guthrie, and then one for, uh, Ms. Denon. Um, if we weren't to do this, we probably, are you saying we would probably have to build an ambulance facility in the Portland area somewhere?
I'm sorry, Mr.
Even if we didn't, if we did not do this, you're saying that we probably would have to end up building one somewhere up there?
Eventually, yes. Again, there, there are two bays that, that the two ambulances are, are stationed in. One is semi-climate controlled, the other one is absolutely not. Uh, and also, um, now, there are currently four crew members that are in that, uh, in that facility, at least 12 hours per day. Uh, I've been in it, it's, it's, um, no disrespect to the, to the hospital, but it's subpar for what we need, uh, very, very small. Um, and I, I think there, there's some other issues there that, that we need to correct, uh, for the crew members that are there.
Okay, and for Ms. Denon, you said this can be, um, owned by both Sumner County and And for Ms. Denon, you said this can be owned by both Sumter County and the city of Portland. Is that going to put us in a problem with the state auditor like we've had issues with the Hendersonville library?
No, because we'll set it out that way very clearly and enter into a mutually agreement that addresses maintenance, those type of issues.
Okay. Mr. Driver?
Yes, I just want to go back kind of the original question. One of the reasons we were discussing this, besides the facilities that we have now, which are in bad shape and all, but it was brought to our attention that we're having spiking times for ambulance service in that part of the county. So that was something we needed to work on there. But also, one of the other options we had, Portland is building the station to the north, and we might have to go up there. And that would also have increased those times for those ambulances even further for a large portion of our constituents that are down there below the Portland area. And so, I mean, this really was a win-win situation. I believe we were really in discussions about building this before we even found out for sure that, you know, Portland was interested in it. So I think we would go forward with this either way.
Thank you. Mr. Comenden?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For anybody that doesn't know, this property is at Wiseman Elementary, which is directly across 109 from the new emergency room. And since it has came online, not only does the Sumter County ambulance go out and take patients to the emergency room, many times they have to take them from there on to Hendersonville Hospital, Gallatin Hospital. But it's a great location, and I really do like seeing cooperative efforts between the county and the city, and appreciate everybody's support.
Thank you. Mr., or Ms. Kemp?
Yes, because of the auditing requirements, are both functions budgeted separately and expense separately?
We would obviously be responsible for our half of the initial cost and also for the upkeep. Portland would be responsible for their half as well. You know, our body can't make Portland something and vice versa. So we're, Portland has committed, they have passed in their city council meeting, like I said, last month to appropriate this. So now, it's just, it's up to us to appropriate our half of it.
So are the budgets totally separate?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Mr. Good?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. Just to echo Mr. Driver and our fellow commissioners from Portland, this went through budget. It was discussed at length, like Mr. Guthrie has said, Mr. Douglas was there and made a presentation, and it was unanimous. And I think Mr. Commissioner Guthrie pointed out the fact that, and the law directors needed to be pointing out, the law has changed where we're going to have to, we don't pay rent today, and we're going to have to start paying fair market rent anyway. So that's going to change whether we'd like it or not. And this is obviously a great deal around, for everybody. Thanks.
Seeing no one else in the queue, I'll call for the vote. The resolution is on the board. Each commissioner, please record your vote. Twenty-three votes are entered. All 24 votes are entered. Does anyone wish to change your vote? Resolution receives 23 affirmative votes and is approved. Okay. Mr. Guthrie, is that it?
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Uh, legislator, Mr. Harris.
Resolution 1503-03, we're, 1503-03, we're going to accept the review of judicial magistrate program, so move.
All right, we have a motion, we have a second. Any questions? All in, well, we got a vote on that. Sorry. Resolution is on the board. No one in the queue, so we'll vote. Resolution is on the board. Each commissioner, please record your vote. Twenty-three votes are entered. All 24 votes are entered. Does anyone wish to change your vote? The resolution is unanimously approved.
Next resolution is 1503-03, discouraging passage of Tennessee House Bill 0985, Senate Bill 0466, so move.
We have a motion, we have a second. Second from Mr. Bill Taylor. Discussion. Mr. Good?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, great as possible, this was brought forth. As everyone knows, we often, in this body, are asked by both our state and/or federal delegations to pass resolutions generally in favor of an action. This came forth from the county executive, myself, the, what has been a unanimous vote from our legislative committee, the sheriff, the road superintendent, the law director, and many, many others. I think some saw the correspondence as it relates to this bill. I also had an email sent today, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to share it. Anybody wants a copy can obviously have it, from David Connor, which is the executive director from the Tennessee County Commissioners Association, that says, "For the information of the Board of Director of Tennessee Commissioners Association, last Tuesday during the County Commission of Government Day conference, and they voted to oppose House Bill 985, Senate Bill 466, which prohibits county employees from serving on the county commission, we would encourage you guys to pass this resolution." Mr. Chairman, also, our, the other, everybody, every association and body that we, as county commissioners, depend on for guidance, and probably every commissioner here has quoted these associations, be it CTS, be it State County Road Association, be it Sheriff's Association, be, and every other association, which I'm going blank on, also asked that this be opposed and plan to fight it. Last, Mr. Chairman, for this body, I have in my hand, anybody wants copies, this has come up before in some form or fashion, and we have, which the law director has gone through these, and anyone wants them, I have a breakdown, numerous attorney generals' opinions that this cannot happen. Attorney general opinion 1389 and 1150 specifically, you basically cannot tell someone they cannot serve a, an elected, be as an elected official as it relates to their occupation. 1389 specifically says, may a county commissioner who is also employed at the county school system vote on school budgets. That answer was obviously no, and all the other opinions. So, Mr. Chairman, candidly, we have been working very hard, both at the state of Tennessee. I know Mr. Commissioner Graves has talked to, and other commissioners have talked to some, myself included, some neighboring counties, and what I'll be opposing this, and we would just really strongly suggest that we pass this resolution and hope it doesn't pass the state. Thanks.
Okay. Mr. Hen?
This particular resolution is not easy for me. I don't have to have an opinion on it. Everybody that I've ever talked to about this particular subject has voiced their opinion that it's conflict of interest. So I'll be voting no on this, based on the discussions I have had with people in the district.
Thank you. Mr. Raine?
Yes, sir, I appreciate it. I have already expressed my opposition to this to legislators, a couple of issues specifically. One being, if the state doesn't want their employees to run for certain offices, they have the right to do that. If city councils don't want their employees to run for certain offices, they have the right to do that. The state here is taking away our rights as a county. The county should be able to make that decision, not the state. That's one point I have. Another point I have is that the bill is not well-written. It refers to school board employees as county employees. School board employees are not county employees. They are employed by the Board of Education. So, in that regard, the bill is incorrect. In addition, if you are a member of the National Guard, you can be a member of the state legislature. Is that a conflict of interest? Because the state legislature votes on issues regarding the National Guard? It's just a question. I'm not against people in the National Guard being in the state legislature, but if we're going to be doing this, we need to be consistent, and we don't need to be hypocritical about it. By the way, if there is a conflict of interest, people on this commission declare a conflict of interest. So that is done as well. I've also talked to a friend who's a former county commissioner in a small rural county, and he told me this would devastate the small rural counties. In many of these small rural counties, the vast majority of their workforce work for the county or the Board of Education. And the rest of the workforce works out of the county. And so, the people who serve on the county commissions are people who are employed by the county or by the school board of education. And I would hope that the state legislators who represent small rural counties would understand that they are going to have a great issue in those counties, because a lot of those times, they've got one person running for office. They don't have enough people who are interested in serving in office to have multiple candidates. So it's going to be devastating for those small county commissions. So I encourage everyone to vote for this and let your legislators know.
Thank you, Mr. Bill Taylor.
Mr. Chairman, I'm extremely disappointed that our state representative didn't consult any of us about our county of representation. For 220 years, our state has never had a problem. We've had, if we've had a problem, we've addressed it by avoiding our conscience, declaring the conflict of interest and avoiding our conscience, and it's been run, it's done fine. It's an inherent right for every citizen in our state to be able to run for public office and to vote. Now, we're trying to be legislated to limit who can run for vote based on their vocation. As Commissioner said, there's a number of attorney generals that already said this is unconstitutional and won't go. If it is passed, it sets a precedent for other jobs and other professions to be limited to run for state. What about if you work for the Public Works Department? What if you work for the Water Department? What if you work for the Natural Gas Company? What if you work for any other public utilities? What if you're related to somebody? What if your spouse runs? What if your child runs? What if your grandchildren ran? Right? I'm a deputy sheriff with Sumter County Sheriff's Department. I don't get paid, but am I excluded? I get paid by the state of Tennessee for TINcare. Am I excluded? Where does it stop? If this one precedent begins, that opens the floodgates to do more and more. It reeks of what our, why didn't our state represent, consult us? What's the status, what's the stimulus for her bill? To me, it reeks of background politics and resembles discrimination that we've been trying to get rid of in the state of Tennessee for 200 years. Sumter County does not need to be, needs to have, like Mr. Raine said, we need to represent our own and legislate our own, not let it be regulated by the state. Our vote for our resolution and against this bill by our state representative is a vote for free elections. None of the candidates have snuck around hiding the fact that they are a public employee ever. Most of them are proud to be a public employee, most of them are proud to be a county employee, and they haven't hidden that from the voters. Let the voters decide from our county who should mandate and be elected. That's the democratic process that we've been using for 200 years. It's a bad bill, and it should be unanimously disapproved. Anyone who votes for this is going on record as saying, "I think we need to limit people who can run against, for public office in our county." That implies, to me, I want to limit who vote runs against me so I can maintain my position. That's not right. It's a bad bill, it shouldn't happen, it should, and we should, the vote should be 24 to zero in favor of our resolution against this bill. Thank you.
Mr. Mont Taylor?
Mr. Chairman, I'm not going to vote for this. There's been people ask me not to vote for it. And one thing, one reason I'm not going to vote for it is because I don't like the state telling me what to do, or telling us what to do. I don't like when they come up here and get involved in what we're doing. I mean, as an individual, I'll speak to my representative that I vote to elect, but I'm not going to vote for something asking them to go either way. Because, in my opinion, it hadn't got anywhere when I voted for it, so, so, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Good?
Never mind, Chairman.
Okay. Mr. Guthrie?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll support this because basically our state legislature, or this bill, to phrase that, this bill is basically telling the voters who they cannot vote for. Completely disagree with that. If the voting public, obviously, they would know, most likely would know that the person who are there voting is a county employee, then they could just choose not to vote for that person. But I really believe this proposed resolution, this proposed legislation is telling the public who they cannot vote for. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Seeing no one else in the queue, we're ready to vote. The resolution is on the board. Each commissioner, please record your vote.
For permission, I think there's some confusion. Who are we voting for? We're not voting for the bill as presented to state, we're voting for resolution against that bill. Am I correct?
That is correct. If you vote for this, then you're voting against the bill. If you vote, if you vote yes, you're voting against the bill. If you vote no, you're voting for the bill. Okay?
Ready? Nope.
Okay.
I'm starting to vote, and I've got to reload.
Oh, okay, we got to reload. Hold on. All right, we're voting on Resolution 1503-03, discouraging the passage of House Bill 985 and Senate Bill 840-0466. Yes, sir. I've got to re-enter it, sorry.
You spent all of his brain cells on designing those ballots.
No, sir, we, once, the question was, once we started the vote, we can't stop it. So if there's a question, once the vote starts, it's time. And we went through that vote process, so we'll have to, all right, the vote is...
Mr. Taylor, you got me in trouble.
All right, so, the resolution is now on the board. Each commissioner, please record your vote. All 24 votes are entered. Does anyone wish to change your vote? The resolution receives 19 affirmative votes. All right, Mr. Harris?
Yes, sir. Resolution 1503-04, request legislation by Tennessee General Assembly to more equitably distribute local option sales tax collected by online retailers not physically located in the state of Tennessee, so move.
We have a motion, we have a second by Mr. Akins. Discussion. Mr. Raine?
Yes, sir. Just to make sure everyone understands, what the situation here is, if you go online and you vote, and you buy something from Belks.com or Coles.com, the property taxes, or the sales taxes from that purchase all go to the state. None of it comes back to Sumter County, or to the cities of Gallatin or Hendersonville or wherever. This resolution would encourage the request of state to change that. There are several different functions that they could do to change that. But this will, hopefully, if it's, if something is done by the state, will make this more equitable for those of us in the counties and the cities. Thank you.
All right. Mr. Hen?
Let me point out something that I happen to know to be for a fact. Sometimes when you order online or from here or there, you, when your zip code is put in for your address, that particular municipality gets part of that sales tax. There are post offices that have closed down across our county. There was one in Mitchell, and it closed down. Well, if you buy now, if you're in Mitchell and you order something, you ordered with a Portland address. Now, I ain't got enough sense to know how to straighten all that out, but if, they're ordering out of a municipality, and if it's anybody wise enough to address that issue with this, along with this, I don't know how you get the sales tax revenue to a municipality unless that municipality has a post office. So if anybody's smart enough to address that issue, I certainly would appreciate it. If the legislative committee knows how to get their hands on that, I'd appreciate if they take that up.
Is there anyone that can answer that question for Mr. Hen? Because I can tell you, I'm not smart enough to answer.
Chairman.
All right, Mr. Good?
The United States Post Office has gone through four, whatever, whatever it's called, where they are in the process of shutting down. The Royal Drivers are in it, the other are not, and they're in constant battle. But they have made every decision, it has nothing to do with the state or any county on which post office can be closed. Every time one is closed, there is a public hearing that has to happen in that community. 99% of people don't attend, but they do have those public hearings, and they make 100% of those decisions. We can pass something saying we force something against something, but that's how that works.
Would that be called realignment?
Good, good work. Thank you.
All right.
They had the public hearing and ignored everybody and went on.
But that still don't resolve the fact that if you live in that municipality and you
order something and you pay sales tax, that that sales tax does not go back to that municipality, it goes to whichever municipality that you're addressing, that the post office...
Whatever your zip code is.
Yeah, that's right. So, I don't know how to fix that. I wish somebody did.
Okay. All right, seeing no one else in the queue, Mr. Clerk, you want to put that on the board? And don't anybody say anything.
The resolution is on the board. Each commissioner, please record your vote. 23 votes are entered. All 24 votes are entered. Does anyone wish to change your vote? Receiving 23 affirmative votes, resolution is approved.
All right, Mr. Harris?
Resolution 1503-05, clarifying that Hendersonville Library shall remain in the name of the city. So moved.
All right, we have a motion. We have a second from Mr. Goode. Discussion. Let me say before we have someone in the queue, but Lori Ashley, who is the Administrator of Elections, is here this evening. She had signed up to talk earlier, and I asked her if we could wait until we got to this so that she could share with us...
That's the next one, sir.
We're on 05, that's 06.
I don't have 06 on here.
Yeah, well, it's item, we're on item number four, Resolution 05.
Sorry.
We're good.
I thought we just voted on... That's the General Assembly. I don't have an 06.
All right. I don't have the right agenda. Excuse me. Okay, we are presently, okay, I see now, we're on 05, clarifying that Hendersonville Library shall remain in the name of the city. Okay, I'm sorry. So, we'll go back, Mr. Hent, go ahead, Mr. Hent.
I'll try to make this as quick as possible. Some of you were here, some of you weren't here. When this building project started on libraries across the county, and it's turned out to be a great thing, it's a great thing for Sumner County. I'm a little prejudiced, but anyway, the two libraries that started first was the Gallatin Library and Hendersonville Library. Gallatin, the agreement was that three entities would furnish a third of the money. Gallatin City furnished a third of the money, Sumner County furnished a third of the money, and the private sector furnished a third of the money. Now, the fact of the matter is, when Gallatin was wrapping up, they didn't have enough private sector money available. They had commitments, so they went and borrowed the money at the bank and used those for collateral and finished the Gallatin Library, and they just paid off the debt, right, at least recently. Hendersonville, it's my understanding, and I don't know this for a fact, but the same deal was made with Hendersonville. A third from the county, a third from Hendersonville, and a third from the private sector. There was a fundraising project started in Hendersonville, but they found themselves in the same situation, I think. When it come time to finish up the project, there was not enough private sector money that had come into any of their third. The county put in their third, and Hendersonville was left having to finish the library without enough private sector money. And what I understand is that the city of Hendersonville chose to go ahead and finance the balance of that and build the Hendersonville Library. The other, Portland Library, when, it was a third, third, and third. Private sector, the city of Portland, and the county. That's where all this, that's where all this come about. Now, it was the understanding, I think I'm 100% correct on this, it was, at least I know I am for Gallatin, that when Gallatin come time to name their library, they were told that the name of the library had to be Gallatin Library of Sumner County. So, that's what's on the building up here. And of course, we're in Millersville right now. The same deal, we, this body in its wisdom handed them a certain amount of money based on an estimate and told Millersville they had to carry the rest of the ball the rest of the way. They are doing, they are doing an excellent job and committing money to do that. Now, they do have a, they do have a foundation started down there, and they got friends of the library, and they've got some grants from the State of Tennessee, and they're working on some more grants. But there, Gallatin as well as Millersville, both of them understood clearly that when this project was finished, that the facility would be deeded to Sumner County. It would become Sumner County's building. Everybody was clear on that concept, that the building come back to Sumner County. Now, what I think's going to happen is, I think this is going to pass, but what I'd like to do is make a motion that we table this for 30 days, and I'd like somebody to have in writing a clear understanding of how this relationship is going to work. Is Hendersonville committing to forever furnish a building for the Sumner County Library of Hendersonville to be in? Are they committing to do all the maintenance on the building? Are they committing to take care of the drives? Are they committing for all the mowing and all that kind of stuff that goes on? If you've got a water leak, do you call, do you call the city of Hendersonville? I just think we need something, I think both parties would be far, far better off if the county executive and the county attorney or somebody would sit down with the leadership of the city of Hendersonville and write out a mutual understanding or a, I don't care what you call it, agreement or not, but just where everybody would have clarification. If they want their driveway striped, do they call Sumner County or they just go ahead and stripe the driveway? So, I think that, I think we'd all be better off, and this has gone on long enough, no 30 days will hurt anything, but I think that subject should be broached, and I think we should understand clearly what we're going to, what we're doing when we walk away from this facility and say that facility belongs to the city of Hendersonville. And I think we ought to also consider the fact that if Gallatin would like us to give that building to them, we ought to consider that, and if Millersville would like us to give that building to them, then we ought to consider that. We all, county ought to be playing by the same rules. So, it's my motion that we defer it for 30 days till an agreement can be written and all of us can read over and examine the statement.
Okay, you said table, now you're saying defer, and I think defer is what we want to say.
Table 30 days.
I think it's defer. I think it would be defer, you want to defer.
That's right.
Okay, all right, is there a second? All right, Mr. Taylor, second. No discussion on that since it's an amendment. Could you put that on the board, please?
All right, the motion is to defer the resolution for 30 days. That is on the board. Each commissioner, please record your vote. 23 votes are entered. Anyone not voting wishing to vote? Anyone wishing to change your vote? Receiving the necessary two-thirds vote, the motion to defer is approved.
Okay, so we'll let that go with the attorney. Okay.
Chairman, can I make a clarification on...
Go ahead, Mr. Goode.
Mr. Chairman, this actually started two years ago. We formed a committee in Hendersonville. On a money standpoint, Hendersonville gives 3 million, Sumner County is giving 3 million, and Foles, that private group that was mentioned, is 4 million. Hendersonville has agreed that they will continue to do all maintenance and upkeep that is well into the, probably 50 to 100,000 dollars and get to the same figure. And this changes nothing as it relates to the comments that were made as it relates to the county. I can see the county executive wants to speak to that as well. We have had these conversations. The committee in the previous commission, the commissioner that spoke may not be aware, formed an ad hoc committee that went to the city of Hendersonville. Mr. Chairman, you said on that, and they helped to come together with this collective agreement on how we would get to where we are. And that is essentially this recommendation. I would close, and I can see the executive wants to address it as well, that the commissioner spoke about it, his counterpart that helped with the libraries, Mr. Jim Young, that we hired to help get the library straight, is for this as well.
Okay, but let me point out that this has been deferred, so all of that information can be shared within the next 30 days. Mr. Executive, you want to talk to this? Okay, go ahead.
I really wish...
Can you push your microphone, please?
I really wish the commission would reconsider this item. Let me tell you why. First of all, it's the third year in a row we've had a significant audit finding in the State of Tennessee. That's not good. This thing has been stalemate for three years now. That's ridiculous. We do not have these agreements with all the other cities involved. Hendersonville, Commissioner Goode is right, they provide about 100,000 dollars a year. It's already in the city's name. The library is owned by the city. Now, you can talk to our attorney, but there's not really a whole lot we can do about it. And I'll give you another example. The agreements are all over the place. City of Portland, they own their own library. I'm fine with that. City of Gallatin, we own the library. The city of Westmoreland, we own the library. The city of Millersville, we will own the library. Now, you know, Hendersonville provides about 100,000 dollars with maintenance, and then they take care of all the grounds. The city provides the money to operate the library. It's worked fine. You know, what I'm asking you to look at tonight, requesting you to look at, is to pass this resolution, leave things as they are. Anyone from any part of the county can visit any library. If you live in Westmoreland, you go to the Hendersonville Library. They're open. We've got a great library system. They work great. I mean, this is, this has been something that has been, I guess, a sore on the side of the county for a while. There's no need of having these audit bindings and having joint ownership. We both have to carry the library at full value on our books, and it's not acceptable to the state. So, I really wish you would reconsider this because I don't know what we can do, the county attorney and I, to come up with some kind of agreement. You're just opening a can of worms. You have to go through every city and do the very same thing. So, please reconsider. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I was on prevailing side. I would like to move to make a motion to reconsider.
Okay, we have a motion to reconsider, and that would, parliamentary, you'd have to have a motion from the voting side and a second, second from this Lamar. Okay, point of order, Mr. Hyde.
I would like to ask our attorney for, you, and the information I have here, this could not be once voted to be table, cannot at this meeting be reconsidered. I'd ask...
Okay, based on what the attorney's telling me, that we'll have to come back to the next meeting. That does not mean that it has not been, that it has been voted down. It just means that we will come back, and in the next 30 days, the attorney can try to come up with some kind of legal ruling so that we can all make sure that we're on the same page with all of our libraries. So, Ms. Crew, you're in, but we're not going to, I mean, was it on this because we...
Well, I just have a question, not necessarily on the libraries.
Okay, go ahead, ask a question.
Millersville Library. I'm curious, where are we on that as far as the one-third, one-third, one-third? Are we still sticking to that? Because I had heard that we were going to end up putting more into that than originally planned.
I think at this point, it's what we originally... All right, Mr. Harris, we're back to you. Thanks, sir.
Resolution 1503-06, allowing Sumner County to, having a hard time with that word tonight, allowing Sumner County to participate in the Convenient Voting Center pilot program. And I think there you are.
Okay, we have a motion. Hold on just a minute, Ms. Ashley, but go ahead, stay right there. We have a motion, so moved, all right, we have a second, second for Mr. Rang. Now, as I was saying earlier, Ms. Ashley is the administrator, she's in administration of the election process, and so she has shared this with the committee, and she asked that she speak tonight, and so we're going to let her speak at this time. Go ahead.
Thank you, Chairman Decker, and thank you commissioners for allowing me to speak. I'll be brief. In front of you on your desk is a handout kind of explaining what I'm here to talk about, which is convenient voting centers. Also, you'll find a map with each of your districts, I believe. Mr. Kemp is going to put that up as well. What are convenient voting centers? This was brought up in 2012. It got out of committee at the Legislature, and then it was laid on the desk, which means no action was taken. Basically, what it means is that any voter in Sumner County can vote at any precinct on Election Day. The pending legislation is going to allow five counties, out of Sumner County's 95 counties, to be involved in a pilot program to see if it's good for Tennessee. Sumner County is well poised to be one of these counties because we were the first county to go countywide with e-polls, which is our laptops that allow people to vote without having to stand in line in their names and that kind of thing. There was a little bit of confusion, it was my fault, at the Legislative Committee. You see, each of the 12 districts, the legislation recommends that there be at least one voting, convenient vote center per each district. So, the law actually allows one per 10,000. So, we could actually go down to 10. We have 12 voting districts, so we don't want to do that. The confusion was, due to the topography and the logistics of some of our districts, one voting center per district will just not be sufficient. I spoke with Commissioner Poskasil, he was at the meeting, and his district is number 12 over here. You'll see right there. And if we put one even in the center of his district, somebody's going to have to drive. We did not implement, we do not want to implement convenient vote centers and make it more inconvenient for people to vote. So, what I wanted to do, when we did the precinct consolidation, some commissioners got upset, and I know there's a lot of new commissioners. We did post our meetings, but you all get a lot of notices and, you know, perhaps didn't know, but we didn't have anybody attend, and then some people weren't happy. So, what I'm pledging to do is meet with each of you with your districts. You know your districts better than anybody, and meet with you and discuss convenient vote centers. The areas that'll affect the most are Hendersonville and Gallatin. Convenient vote centers work best in highly dense areas. In Hendersonville, and I've got Commissioner Goode and Commissioner Krueger here, we have 10 precincts, six of which are on the two peninsulas. Doesn't make a lot of sense. We have precincts within a few miles of each other. We've had vote times, wait times at some vote centers for hours, when one down the street is five minutes. So, what we want to do is a better job at locating our vote centers along major arterial roads and things like that, so it makes it easier for the voters to get out and vote. What we do know is that if a voter goes to a precinct on Election Day and there's long lines, sometimes they just leave. They just don't stay. We know if they're late, and this happened, my Chairman Emlings here, I'm sure this is his priority this evening, if they're working in Nashville and can't get here, they just can't vote. Whereas if they lived in Westmoreland or Portland, they came into the county, they could stop anywhere along the line, Goodlettsville, Hendersonville, and they could vote. We know that this increases voter participation. This is done in 11 other states. Sometimes the participation increases as much as 10 to 12%. Just to give you some idea of our participation, in March of '12, we had 20% of our voters show up. In August, we had 19%. Presidential, we had 63%. In '14, those numbers went down significantly. Our May election, we had 8% participation. We had in August 19%, and in November general, with no presidential, 38% participation. Guys, you know what these elections cost. You have to fund my budget. We need more people getting out to vote, and this helps. The voting public loves the concept. It's got over an 80% approval rate by voters. They like the idea of being able to go anywhere and cast their vote. We can select superior locations with superior access and parking. Right now, we're limited by these lines, whether you're county commission districts. There might be an ideal convenient vote center a mile from one of your lines, and we can't use that because it's not within those district lines. We make better use of our equipment and our personnel. For example, in Hendersonville, I was talking about the 10 precincts, we could go to better locations, put that equipment in a larger facility, and it would make better use of our equipment and our personnel. We could use less personnel. We can have one machine operator for every two machines. If we had a large number of machines, we could cut down on our poll workers, which are often difficult to find. We also save significant money in software, training, supplies, mileage, just everything we do saves money across the board. Some states have experienced as much as a 60% savings. I'm not going to tell you that we can do that, but it definitely will save the county money, and it's good for the voters. There really are not any negatives. The legislation, as written, requires a supermajority of my election commission members, two of whom are here, which is four out of five, we got five out of five. All five are in favor of this. They also recommended the election officials, which of course will be Senator Hale, Representative Weaver, Rogers, and Lambert... Weaver, Rogers, and Lambert, co-sponsor of the bill, they've all agreed, and they recommend your approval as a county commission. So that's what I'm here asking you for this evening. Time is of the essence. They're gonna discuss this bill the last week of March or the first week in April. It's moved very, very quickly. So, I'm just here asking for your support and approval, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Ms. Ashley, would you stay there? I do have a couple of questions.
Yes, sir.
I have a question for you.
Yes, sir.
Well, back when the precincts were closed, we lost one in my district. You can see from the map that was up there, we had one of the largest geographic covering districts. There's people in, I know in the person, the third, that drive over twenty miles above People don't like when you mess with things. People don't like change. It may be more prevalent in rural communities, but I had no telling how many people tell me that they weren't voting anymore, because we shut down their voting precincts. Also, have three to four hundred signatures on petition upset that we shut down their voting precinct. I have people not voting at that precinct upset because we messed with people's voting precincts. In the rural communities, an election time is a time for people to come together. You see people you don't see a lot. People enjoy going to their polls that they went to for twenty-five years. Maybe that's more prevalent in the area I come from. I don't like messing with people voting. You change their district, or their precinct, they get confused, some people do, some people don't. I'm not speaking for everybody, but I was speaking to all the phone calls, emails, and letters that I got concerning closing their voting precincts. I also have a problem, when we closed nine voting precincts, we didn't reduce the budget in there. So, our budget was much more operating nine less voting precincts.
I don't believe that's correct, Mr. Taylor.
We can go back and look at it.
Okay.
That's fine, I can disagree with it. It-
Because I turned in, back in, over a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So, the actual budget amount may appear that, but that money was turned back in.
But you got a lot of people still out there that, you know, they don't like their voting precincts messed with.
Well, they can still go to their old precinct if they want to. This is just an opportunity that if they can't get to that place, they can vote anywhere else in the county.
So, you're telling me that none of the voting precincts will be closed?
No, we will do some consolidations, but like I said, primarily, it will be in Hendersonville and Gallatin. The map's not up there anymore, but the one that you have, you're right, District One, you can see how huge it is. One vote center would never work there. I told you about Mr. Posposil. You know, one vote center won't work there. Three, and I've already met with Commissioner Graves and Driver, and we're gonna reopen Bethpage as a convenient vote center, and that's gonna help your folks in Westmoreland. So, we're gonna add one back there. And now, saying that, the State Coordinator of Elections has to approve our plan, but there's really no reason that he would not. And they have the same concerns that you had, and so we think that'll, you know, that'll make a lot of those folks happy again.
Well, I'm not gonna support it either.
Okay.
I'm gonna ask my state representative, if my state senator not the support as well.
Okay.
Probably tell those four, five hundred people, it's kinda like, maybe not the support of it either.
Okay.
Mr. Hyde?
Uh, Ms. Ashley, I like the idea of convenience, I make advantage of early voting, but I've just got a couple of questions.
Yes, sir.
About this. You mentioned that Hendersonville might be affected more than maybe some of the areas of the county. And since I represent the smallest geographic area probably in the county, does that mean that I would probably be losing the voting precincts?
Well, again, we're gonna meet with each one of you, so we would, you know, definitely want, you know, and seek your input. What we'd like to do is make larger centers on arterial roads. So, I think Hendersonville would have a minimum of four convenient vote centers. A minimum of four. And so, my ideal locations might be Long Hall of Baptist, they've already agreed. Center Point Oasis went out, the church went out, and now they have another church in there. That might be a location. First Baptist in Hendersonville might be a good location. We've not approached them, but we really didn't feel like until we got your approval that we could approach anybody. And again, we'll involve you in the decisions involving your district.
Just off the top of your head, are the states that are in approval vote on this, are they mostly larger, more than state?
The most, the most, two recent that approved this was North Carolina and Texas. So, it's, it did go, it did start in the north initially, like most things do, but it has, it has come south.
And if you might know, when I walk in the precinct, is there, when I fail to vote in favor of early voting?
Yes, sir.
Everyone's voting for the precinct, and they know most everyone else in an area this small.
Sure.
What would, are you relatively sure that you prevent voter fraud with this?
Oh, absolutely. We'll, it's just like early voting. It's identical. It, the second someone, you know, that an application is printed, it registers them as having voted, so they cannot go somewhere else and vote again.
Mr. Rain?
Yes, sir. I was just gonna say, we've already got convenience voting centers. They are voting.
That's correct.
We're doing that now. I served on the Election Commission and, for five years, and during that period of time, we rearranged voting precincts, and we rearranged polling places. Those things are gonna happen. And I understand concerns about, I mean, seeing people have a team for a while, wanting to vote, but that's not, but voting's not a social role.
That's correct.
So, voting is the express purpose of allowing people to cast their votes. And I've heard from other people, you know, people who work at polling places that are closed, and they didn't go any work anywhere else, because that's the only place they wanted to work. And I understand that. I've worked with polling places as well, as a camaraderie there, but we'll still have that with the, with these other areas. You know, just an example, I teach at Gallatin High School. We've got teachers who live all over the county, and we have a polling place right now at Gallatin High School. And they walk out and say, "I've gotta, I can't vote here. I've gotta drive home after school, or I've gotta vote before coming to school." And it would be much more convenient if they could vote in, you know, in the community where they work, as opposed to having to go home. I was wanting to support this reform of the state process, but I won't support this again.
I would also like to mention to Mr. Hyde's point, most of the people do vote at the precincts they've always voted at. I mean, statistically, they go, you know, they go to their community. But this is really just to help the people, per Mr. Rain's observation, who may live in a different part of the county than where they work, and it makes it difficult to get there. The other thing is, is we mentioned the people who live in Nashville or work outside the county who have difficulty getting back to their precinct, and so they just, before seven, and they just simply don't vote. So, all we're trying to do is not exclude anybody, just trying to be as inclusive as we can and give them those opportunities.
Mr. Ray?
Mr. Chairman, I've just got a couple of questions about, I wanna thank the Chairman of the Election Commission, Ms. Ashley, too. They let me ask some questions. I'm still a little bit, I just don't see the savings there. I didn't know one of them was about the savings necessary. We've been doing this, and things change, I understand. We've got the first, second, third, and the twelfth, I believe, which costs, I believe it's gonna be district separated. But it's all rural, I know, and we're the ones driving. Hendersonville, Gallatin, well, maybe some spots a little bit. Getting early vote, most of us in the dense part of the county. So, those rural districts are gonna be driving. And what that means to us, we don't have the numbers, of course. That means we're gonna be driving. My parents, both of them are eighty-two years old. Fortunately, I'm still able to carry an early vote or somewhere else. And I know you mentioned putting Bethpage back in. That would be great for our area, but I just don't feel that the convenience voting centers are a plus for us. It's only two counties in Tennessee from the highest-
Five initially.
But it's down to two.
I have not seen the list. The last time I saw it, it had about eight, and then it went down to three. A lot of the counties don't have e-polls, so in order for them to implement it, they would have to go buy the equipment, and I would say it would be a challenge. We've had two full election cycles with our e-polls. I think it would be challenging to go buy new equipment, train your workers, and implement convenient vote centers during the same election. So, a lot of them have dropped out for that reason. I would also mention that the cost savings was just a benefit. That's not my primary reason. The primary reason is for the voters.
I don't know how much money we save when you shut down a mad precinct.
Well, again, to Mr. Taylor's point, we turned in over a hundred and fifty thousand dollars back in our budget, because we really weren't sure. I mean, we, you know, it was just kind of an unknown, and we'll just keep, you know-
That year, you closed it down?
Mm-hmm. Well, no, the next, we did that in thirteen, and then it would be the next election cycle, which was fourteen.
Did you, I guess, in other ways, Mr. Hyde, I don't guess I'm using his name tonight, about the vote. I don't understand the density of it, of why you vote. If you put four Hendersonville, I think I already mentioned that time, if you put four, and you're gonna cut out some, is that correct?
That's correct. I mean, we're gonna put them in more strategic locations. Again, I've got six on the two peninsulas out of ten, and there are people that literally live within a mile of three precincts, and that just doesn't seem to make a lot of sense. Whereas if I put it on a arterial road before they went down the precinct, we have to use a lot of elementary schools that don't have good parking and access. We, just because of the lines, the county commission lines, where we have more favorable buildings and facilities that we could use that are actually owned by the county.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Driver?
Yes, I have a couple, I want to point something out, and I have a couple of questions and comments here as well. Can we see the map again?
Every time I turn the mic, it's missing a bit.
I'm sorry about that.
If I turn the mic, it turns back a little bit.
Well, I have a little different idea on this, especially from my district. We did have three polling places that were cut out. We did hear a lot, and I'm sure Mr. Ray did as well, from constituents about that, about them being cut out. A lot of people were upset about that. But I don't think anybody was probably more affected than the people in the Bethpage particular area. And, Phil Commissioners, if you'll look at that map up there, the top of our district is where that white, over to the right side, especially hits that blue. Okay? Our polling place, my polling place, and I live on that road, is at the city center. The city center is the end of my district. So, most people vote with from one far end of county, almost from Trousers County Line up there, and then almost to Westmoreland, and we have had people drive all the way to city center. And they were just figuring we did not make that trip, just flat out, especially older folks and all that. You know, I know we lost the one end, Tarow, but there is a nice church, big parking lot all over there, just in the springs. I think the people, Bush's Chapel and all that, would probably still have to come down to Donovan's Pike and all to come to the city center. But I think adding this, if that's the way that we need to do it to get that polling place back at Bethpage, is a big deal for the people there in my district, because there are a lot of folks in there, and they all have to come completely into Gallatin. And I just think that's a little parkable. I also think this idea of, we suffered out there in Bethpage for years, at the old side view, it basically had gravel drive, and it parked in grass and wood, and found a nice place at Bethpage. And it's so nice to be able to park there. So, this allows us to move some places where there are more parking, it's just safer than wherever else. Regardless of what district that's in, I think that's a plus to consider.
Mr. Marrow?
Thank you, Ms. Ashley. I guess I'm a advocate, and eat it too kind of guy. Why would it be necessary to, if you want to have some convenient polling centers, why would it be necessary to close some other centers down? There's a lot of factors that one, you're gonna have to get people to say yes, that you can have it there.
Mm-hmm.
And if you don't get the right locations, then we're really messed up.
Mm-hmm.
So, what would be the rush of saying, "We're gonna implement this," and at the same time, we know we're gonna cut out things that are working? From working the polls this year, can't tell you how many people said, "This isn't my place anymore. Forget it. I'm going home." I think all of it, we need to make a subpar job of getting the changes out. There were a lot of people that shut up, and didn't know to shut. So, why, that would be my first question. Why do we have to say, "We're gonna do this," and immediately close some?
Well, because they're not effective. I mean, we had some precincts, Indian Lake, for example, that there were some wait times over three hours, when Walton Ferry had five minutes. So, by using better facilities, it's just a better use of our equipment in one location, rather than spreading it again in very close proximity precincts.
Okay. And I get that, that you're gonna have some that are always heavy and some that are not. So, now, we're gonna have a wait time at one center of six hours.
No.
And we shut in at the end of Walton Ferry Road, who can't drive, does their best. Let's be honest, my generation's terrible at voting. So, right now, voters who show up, I work the polls every day, most of them didn't look like me.
Correct.
Most of them look like former principals. I say that to say that we understand getting out the vote, and what this will do, in my opinion, will take the elderly and our older citizens who still respect the right the way it should be respected, and make it harder for them, because they say, "I can't go from Lake Terrace Drive back on Indian Lake all the way up to First Baptist Hendersonville, and I'm not gonna go. It's too much, or my son can't come and get me." So, I'm all for early voting and places where people can go easier for us that are trained, but by taking rural stations out, I just don't understand why we can't have both to fit everybody's needs. I mean, you know?
It doesn't make sense to do convenient vote centers and leave all the, leave all the ones that are there there. It just doesn't, it doesn't help. It doesn't work.
And how does that make sense? Just my-
What do you mean? I'm sorry. How do you mean?
Well, if somebody's gonna take advantage of it, those people are gonna take advantage of it. If they're, I don't understand why it has to be, you have to do it this way.
Well, you don't have to do it, and that's why I'm gonna involve each of you, you know, in your district level, to say what works for your district. I mean, we're gonna have your input, one-on-one, on what you would like to see.
But if you say yes to convenience, and you have to do whatever.
No, absolutely not.
That's, that's what I-
It just makes sense to. As far as the elderly voter, with the states that have convenient vote centers, absentee voting actually goes down. They come out and participate more.
I'm not winking at you, I got the stomach.
Sure. And the other thing is, there's legislation to consider moving the absentee age from sixty-five to sixty, to try to get more people to participate, but actually, they like going to the polls, and this has worked, worked out a little bit better.
I think, okay, I think that-
One thing I didn't mention, we have to notice every household about these changes. So, we will, and then we'll have-
Notice, and, you know, the county, with those numbers you said, I mean, if this is an attempt to get voted, oh, I'm okay with that. Y'all do a great job. I'm just saying we're not, you don't wanna pay off a nose spot your face. And I look at the Lakeside Park location, because I happen to pay attention to-
Lakeside Elementary?
Yeah. Lakeside Elementary, and it was a big, busy precinct, and then I look at that, and I know that area. I believe that's a Commissioner Dr. Jack.
Yes, sir.
That's a big precinct. I know the people who live there are elderly, at least. I mean, if you do lose some of that, you lose a huge part of that district's voters. So, I don't-
And against-
I don't think it's a permanent change.
Again, statistically, voter participation increases.
I'd like to see that statistic.
I'd be happy to send it to you.
Mr. Decker, can I take a moment here as Chairman of the Election Commission?
We'd have to have a motion. Second. All in favor, say aye. You feeling as Chairman of the Election Commission?
Thank you. One of the things that I have as a benefit, I've been on the Election Commission for ten years. So, I've seen a high of forty-two precincts, and I've seen a low of twenty-seven, as you all have right now. Technology has changed. We're on e-polls. Technology has changed. We're on e-polls. Everything is electronic. Some of the precincts that were open in the past couldn't get the signals from here so we communicate with the voting machines. We had to do something. As the Chairman of the Election Commission, we consolidate precincts. And I made a pledge to every precinct that got closed. If you wanted me to come out and speak to your group, I would do that. Two precincts asked me to come out. The response was overwhelming. We understand. We don't like it. It's the right decision. In light of the vote the Commission just made, where I lost an election, I also will be on the Election Commission. And in our meeting, we pledged to meet with each of you. At least give y'all the opportunity to come meet with us, not as a whole body, but by district. So, we can look at the maps, look at places, see which district can benefit, see which can't. The other thing that you have to consider is the state has changed the requirements for precincts multiple times during the year. How many voters can we have per, per machine? How many voters can we have per precinct? That determines how many precincts we have to have. They're giving us the opportunity to expand the size of precincts and expand the amount of people that can vote there. So, if you're stuck in one part of the county and you haven't voted, you can vote at the nearest place to you so you don't get not to vote. Statistics, like they said, tell you that it's going to go up. Our goal is to place these if it's approved so that if people are driving, they're going to pass vote centers. As opposed to, you've got, I live on Indian Lake Peninsula. When we consolidate, I closed my precinct. So, we go vote, I've got to go back down the peninsula. I'm going the opposite way that I go. It's inconvenient. Is it long? No, it's only a mile, a mile and a half where I have to drive. But it's the wrong way for me. Our goal is to put these so everybody's going the right way. If you're in the peninsula, you're coming out to work. You're coming out to shop. You're coming out to get gas. Let's put these things where most people will have convenience for them. It'll be convenient for them. And does that mean the rural districts is going to be one? There's no way. Some are going to have to have more. Some may not even change. But it gives us the flexibility to not be bound by where those lines are and having to put a precinct where it has to be there because we've got to service that last few numbers of voters because the other precinct is four. The goal is to have precincts in every county, commission, district. We pledge that to you guys. We're going to be with you if you want to be with us before everybody can. And I told people this the way all the time, I don't even care for all my grown-up years. I've seen what voting means to people. And when we tell people, "We have twenty percent turnout. Isn't that great?" I say, "No, that's terrible." And anything that we can do to help increase voter participation, I think is a positive. I submit to you, this is a positive. And again, when I, like Lori, it was a five-zero vote in the Election Commission. So, all your commissioners, you can handle this behind us. Thank you. I mean, I always have any questions to everyone.
Ms. Chris Taylor?
I was trying to ask a quick, some of you were out there meeting with different departments head there the past couple of months and we've been discussing five-year plans and just some of how they, they run things so I had a better understanding. I had the privilege of meeting with Lori and she let me torture her for about an hour and a half, two hours, I'd ask. And this came up. And I can say without a doubt, this was one of the best things I've heard in a while. It saved us money, but, and I think we're missing something. When she explained to me, I made her really dumb it down because it's me. And I think she kind of went sort of high, to high. What she talks about, it doesn't affect so much the rural counties as much or the rural precincts. What it is, is, let's give you an example. From my and Jerry's district, Indian Lake was at times two, three-hour wait. It was the largest turnout for the county. Henderson High School, who's a mile away, right beside Nanny Berry that was closed, had maybe about five at play most of the time. The idea is, for this convenient voting, is you'll take those two precincts. Those are the precincts, and when she said Henderson and Gallatin, that's what we need to bear in mind. It's not going to be the rural that they're going to try and consolidate. It's going to be the large, kind of metropolitan areas, so to speak, that have a dense population base already. So, if you take Indian Lake, which is way, way back on the bottom of the peninsula, and Henderson High School, it would make sense, you would think Hendersonville would have more, but it just didn't. So, you take those two precincts and you move them to a location, say like First Baptist, that has ample parking. And all of a sudden, and you go, we have four at Indian Lake, I think we have four at Hendersonville. You take those eight, and what she's saying is because we're not going to run two separate locations, we save the money and the volunteers to maybe add two more machines. So, now you have ten machines servicing the same area that previously had eight. More importantly, you've got better parking. It's a better location. You're going right by it. It's on a major thoroughfare. So, you've gone from one location having three hours, one location having five minutes, everybody hopefully having about ten minutes. And the idea is they can add these extra machines at these precincts to really dramatically cut on the time. But more importantly, if you have a consolidation, it's what gets them, is having to have fifty different locations. Because you've got to have the same number of people to greet people, do everything else, watch and make sure everything's being followed. There's only so many experienced pollers, pollsters they have. There are seasonal people they hire, they hire part-time for that. When we start doing this consolidation, it's going to be an amazing difference for the times. And then when you start adding in the fact that if you're coming in from Villasville and you want to stop there and vote, rather than wait until you get to your house because it's six o'clock and you're not sure if you'll make it by seven o'clock, you can do that. And that's where the numbers are going to really bump up. And I've looked at this a little before, when you start doing convenient voting, you get a lot of people that are happy chance voters in the sense that, "You know what? If I drive by and I see a large crowd, I'm not going." So, if I drive by and I see, and I know that this, because they put it out, has a five-minute wait. And there's even in some places that do like, you know, Jiffy Lube's emergency room and they'll put up how long it takes to vote, you know, ten-minute wait, five-minute wait, that kind of thing. But it's an, it's an amazing idea. And we have to think of something. We constantly talk about money and about being efficient in government. This is the epitome of efficient government. It doesn't cut anybody out. It may offer the opportunity to fix some things that were wrong before, like Alan said. But more importantly, it's going to give a better service to the public. It's going to do it cheaper. And it's going to be, hopefully, raising voter turnout. Everywhere they've done it, it's raised it. And I would just ask y'all, take the time to speak with her. I mean, she explained it and I apologize because I'm not doing a good job articulating it. It was an amazing difference, just looking at how much it was going to help work out. The only reason we wouldn't do it would be self-serving because we're being territorial about it. And the reason I say don't be that way is they're going to fix it. That's the whole idea. It's not going to hurt Westmoreland. It's going to fix it in the sense that it should make a more convenient location. Because if you're coming in from a different part of the county, they can go vote there too. And for Alan, for your group, that's not the only place they can vote at. Now, hopefully, it'll fix it by putting Bed Page up there. But everybody that says, "Well, I only have one location to vote." Well, no, now they're going to have eleven, twelve, thirteen, however many we put out there. And that's something we really need to think about. That's where the voter turnout really pumps up, is when people can just drive by somewhere and go, "Oh, I should have voted." "I can. I can vote right there." And that's the one that everybody's heard it. You've got a ton of educators that can't vote where they want to vote. You've got a ton of people that are related to these institutions that allow us to use as voting stations that can't vote. It's payment money. It's efficient and it's going to rock up voter. And there's, to me, it's a no-brainer if we've had a no-brainer.
And let me say this. If you're not on the Election Commission, you don't understand this. It takes between two-hundred-and-fifty and two-hundred-and-seventy volunteers. We actually pay out with the election workers to run the precincts per election. Each year, it's a struggle for us to get enough people to agree to take the huge amount of pay that they get for their fourteen-hour day, which is.
A hundred dollars.
Hundred dollars. And we have been in trouble with that. So, if we can use the people that we get more efficiently, this is what this helps us do.
Mr. New?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For a second minute, can I just say hello to Mr. Chris Taylor? Mr. Chairman, I would say hello to that and to Chairman Emily, Mr. Ray, and Mrs. Driver. And I share along with Mr. Krueger, the previous chairman, talked about down the peninsula. And, and the people that I speak with, and we do know specifically, and I may be off on this, I'm sure I'm a big voice of the wrong. But somewhere between sixty, eighty, seventy percent of the people in Hendersonville drive to Nashville every day. I have worked the poll in Hendersonville every election for twenty-five years. And I can tell you, the Oklahoma complaint, the people, especially in the presidential, coming back into town are the, are the fact that they couldn't get there by seven o'clock. As it relates to ease, let's remind each other that the convenient voting that was pointed out already, we already have three, have four ways to, to vote. So, number one goal is obviously is to get more voter participation. And every stat showed that this helped us this time. I think it was a great idea of the previous Commission that was spoken.
Thank you. Mr. Decker?
Yeah, my, one of my main comments, I think, Commissioner Palmer touched on it as well, is, I guess, it's possible then to implement this convenient voting and not touch the precincts. Correct. There's no, and I know you stayed in the vessel, I'm not sure I understand. So, there's no requirement to, to sign up for, that you have to decrease your precincts.
That's not in the legislation, no.
So, this is just, the, the legislation is just to provide, basically, you can vote at any precinct within the county.
That's correct.
That's correct. So, I, I don't know why, from a transitional standpoint, we wouldn't want to strongly consider that. You know, this past election, there were people, you know, we had that, we had just cut out in my district, just cut out the Bluegrass Baptist Church. And there was confusion by many voters as to where they needed to go, to either to Indian Lake or to, or maybe to Nanny, most recently. But Nanny Berry moved out to Henderson High School. So, there was, Nanny Berry and Bluegrass had cut out. And so, it was just mass confusion. So, now we're like, okay, just go, you know, where, wherever. I mean, you know, my fellow Commissioner Taylor and Chris Taylor spoke about First Baptist Church as an example. I would think that'd be a very core location for District Nine residents. Because I would say the vast majority don't go to Gallatin. They go to Hendersonville. Just like Commissioner New just mentioned. But I, I just want to, I just wanted to clarify that. And I'm, I'm, I'm in favor of doing it. I'm not in favor necessarily of, of closing any precincts on the less near term, so to speak.
And, and again, we're going to meet with each of you and look at your district one-on-one. So, we'll, you know, you'll have the opportunity to have that input for your district.
Thank you.
Ms. Kim?
Yes, I think Jimmy and I, we think we're all set for this change. And change can be safe to change. Obviously, it's not going to be bad. I don't see that as a change can be safe to change. I agree with Mr. Edlin that these times have changed. Technologies change. And I think we need to change quickly. I think the success of this, because of course, we live through a huge shift that I did. We lost one of our votes in thirty-six in this last election. And we did have people that stumbled upon, chose to go. Some by chance, some by directions. The success of this is how we plan for it and how we schedule the transition. And we've got to do, we can't just assume that by a voter registration card that someone's going to take the time to look at that card and say, "Oh, wow, my voter." Typically, people get that card and they just, they get in their wallet. So, the key to the success of this, and I am all for it, and I think it's a great idea. Because too often, you know, I worked in Nashville. I was one of those percentages that worked in Nashville. And typically, I have a hard time getting to my voting precinct in time. I would have loved to have been able to stop at an earlier location in Hendersonville to be able to vote. So, I think, well, I'm not targeted, but again, the key to the success of this is how we transition into it and how we educate the populace as to how we're going to do it.
And one thing I didn't mention, the signs that we used on the precinct consolidation, they were large, four-by-four signs. You could use your smartphone app or had a Take One box. We're going to put those at each of the, if we change any locations, we're going to put them there with Take One maps of the, all the convenient vote centers, directions from that location. You know, and obviously, they're addressed.
But I think we need to go even a step further and start hyping it six, eight months before our election cycle. You know, so to have people with the mindset, not just the week before, but the months in advance, that they know.
If, if it passes and everything gets through the coordinator, we'll start immediately. We'll start now.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Mr. Ball? It's actually, I think it's a great idea. It'll save the county money and it'll be more convenient for the voters, increase voter participation. You started to address the, one thing I mentioned, the voter fraud. Would it immediately register the vote so they couldn't go somewhere else?
Immediately, just like in early voting. I could live in Hendersonville, vote in Portland. I could live in Portland, vote in Westmoreland. You know, it, it immediately goes in and, and marks them as having voted.
Okay. Ms. Bur.
I guess I just want to point out a couple of things. I know in our area, we have, and this is not even all in my district. It's, we have eleven, District Eleven and District Seven are more of each other. So, we have a municipal annex to the voting halls at that time. And right across the street on all that is churches voting hall. Then right up the street, we have the Magus Church. And then we have Walton Ferry Hall. So, and then, I mean, that's a pretty short distance to have had those four polls there.
Correct.
So, I can see we're consolidating some of that would make sense and save money. And one of those convenient centers would be much more convenient. But it adds up, makes perfect, makes perfect sense when I just look at that one strip right there to me. The fact that we have volunteers working at Long Hollow and.
Literally across the street.
Right, literally across the street, the annex, and we can almost wave at each other. It's kind of silly that it seemed to me that they were so close together. But because there was a district line there and because those were the locations that were available, they were possibly at each other, which is a little silly. So, I can totally see how that makes sense to consolidate something in Hendersonville area, especially in my area, which technically, I'm not speaking for my district, I guess. I'm just speaking for the community I have here because I've been. Too, as well. That, and then I guess I'm also curious, did we not win an extra election last year, too?
No, we had three.
We had three. We didn't have any, and I was thinking we had more for some reason, had more last year than we did tomorrow.
No, anytime you have a presidential, it spikes with the percentages I gave you. Correct.
See, there was something different about last year.
Right. But I did turn a significant portion of that back in.
And do you know, this, this not increase, we're talking about, Mr. Palmer was talking about how RHR really doesn't vote. This seems to me like this would increase the vote of RHR.
Absolutely.
RHR is driving Nashville every day about. So, this is what helps get RHR out of that, correct?
That's correct.
Thank you for that, ma'am.
Mr. Menon?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I know that it's probably my short term, but I would have liked to know already, you know, my thinking, do you know what is going to happen in District Two? But is it early voting already, convenient voting? I mean, can't, if you live in Westmoreland, can't you vote in the early voting anywhere in the county?
Yes, early voting, you can vote anywhere in the county. It works identical to that.
But then my question, if we know all the problem areas, why do we really have to pass this resolution to pick some other than crossing the district line?
Well, that's the main reason. I mean, if, if you don't pass this, we can't cross the district lines. And so, we're limited to the facilities within those lines. If we remove the lines, I mean, you see all these different districts, they go away. We can put a voting center anywhere. And like Civic Center is on the edge of three, but it's also on the edge of five and it's on the edge of four. You know, but because of those lines, those folks couldn't go over there and vote.
Look, they couldn't have done that earlier.
A lot of people just insist on voting on election day. And I don't, really can't explain that. I'd like to see our numbers get up in early voting. We're typically around thirty-five percent. If we could get that number up, and I think that's one of our goals, as election commissioners, get those numbers up, then I, I think that'll make it, that would make it better as well.
Yeah, to answer your question in early voting, they could have gone off to end place these up before they would have.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
This actually, I don't want to be too forth of this because I actually perceive advantages and disadvantages approaching. But I'm going to do what Mr. Palmer said. He couldn't have said it better. I have the map back up there, please, sir. The, the little red area at the bottom of the map is my, it's tiny, but a lot. That's why it's, it's small. In that district, there are many nursing homes, assisted living. In that district, there are many nursing home, assisted living, retirement centers, Christian power, any place, heart place, uh, there are many duplexes, rental houses, and elder people, our district is low, and that's a huge problem, and the thing that I'm struggling with here is that I believe that the tenth district and the eighth district are supposed to be the ones to suffer, and I know you're saying, I want your input, but there's a big, big difference between input and decision, and I am very careful that it's one of these two districts that will lose a whole place, um, and if, if you look at it in terms of the demographics of the, of the district, it has a huge problem, and I, I'm struggling with that.
Well, we vote all the qualified nursing home facilities, we go to them.
You go to each one?
We go to each one in the county, and.
And if you look at your district, you also have District Ten that goes all the way down the peninsula.
Oh, I know.
So you got, you got two precincts right there, almost side by side on that.
But they're different districts, and that means these people down to the bottom of the tenth, the very end of the peninsula to the west side are one of the apples, a good distance somewhere close.
Wow.
Probably closer to my district's, or another one.
Makes sense.
Right.
Well, Ferry Elementary would be a great location between eight and ten.
All right. We'll, we'll let them, let's, let's, let's get this discussion.
Sure, location.
But that's just my concern, is that, and the chairman knows as well, since we represent the same district, that we have many elderly people that have, you know, other kids, we take them to the home, we have a lot of apartments, we're loaded with apartments, we're loaded with duplexes, we're loaded with rental homes, and I'm afraid in our particular case, they are trying to cause maybe inconvenience rather than convenience, and that's just what I'm struggling with.
Well, I'm sorry, and, and again, statistically, it improves voter participation, so, and I've said over and over and over again, I would not implement convenient vote centers and make it more inconvenient for anyone to vote, it just doesn't make any sense. So when I say your input, um, you know, we are going to involve you in the process, you know your district better than anybody, and if you say, you know, this, 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 and this, I mean, nothing is set in stone at this point, and I mean, I would love to have brought a, you know, a map and said, this is where they're all going to be, but, but we're just not to that point yet, and the legislation just came through so quickly, we've got to act just to even be considered, and that's why we did not do it in advance, we just simply did not have time.
Okay, Ms. Wilton?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, we're, we're talking about a lot of details that aren't even in, we're not voting on changing voting places, we have a change on reducing one voting place, we're asking the state to allow us to be participating in this convenient voting center. The details, that does not make any sense, we can have twelve, twenty-four, forty-eight voting centers, we can do whatever we want to, this allows us to make it convenient for the voter to vote, I think you need to call a legislature.
Will you go to the question?
Yes, sir.
What's our second, Mr. Palmero?
Thank you.
Okay. Twenty minutes ago. Uh, I will favor say aye. Any votes, any flag sign, okay, thank you, Ms. Anderson.
Thank you all very much, and please feel free to contact me if you start thinking about something, please feel free to contact me.
Hold on, you got a big one. Well, it doesn't make a difference, we have got, uh.
Uh, the question's been called and it's been approved by this body to vote.
If there was any queue, we're always left to speak.
If there was one or two, I have, but there was like eight, pardon?
I stand. So is it?
Okay.
You ready to vote?
Yes, we're ready, let's, all right, we're ready to vote.
Resolution fifteen oh three oh six is on the board, each commissioner, please record your vote. Twenty-three votes are entered, anyone not voting, wish to vote, anyone wishing to change your vote? With fourteen affirmative votes, resolution is approved.
Okay. Uh.
Okay, all right, anything else?
That's all.
Thank you, sir. All right, Rules and Procedure, I'm the chairman of that, we met, uh, a couple of weeks ago looking at the Rules and Procedure, uh, manual, and, uh, we reviewed the manual, we're going to meet again in, in April, there was some discussion, no motions were made, uh, we just opened it up for discussion, uh, the county attorney and her staff are reviewing that to make sure that we have everything cleaned up, and we're going to meet again on April the sixth, at six-thirty, if anyone would like to be, uh, at that meeting. Financial Management Committee, Mr. Langford?
I went in the queue, there was a procedure.
Oh, I'm sorry, uh, hold on, we got, we got.
Yeah, we still got people, Mr. Graves, Mr. Graves, you wish to speak about rules?
About three, uh, motions, there are, I think, yeah, we rolled up some, I don't know what that.
I don't know, Mr. Palmero's asleep, but no, sir.
But I want to, I want to vote, we sent a vote in, in the management office, and was not allowed to speak about our post, our vote, they said, no, something, I went down this again tonight, and it's not right.
Okay, thank you.
I do share the vote, this way, you see, this is.
Okay, thank you.
Do you want Mr. Tyler on Rules?
Uh, Mr. Tyler, are you on the Rules, now let's get back to the Rules.
Yes, sir.
Okay, go ahead.
I'd asked if, in January, that there was an item placed on the agenda, and I went to the Rules and Procedures meeting in March, and there was an agenda, but there was no item that I asked to be placed on the agenda, on the agenda, it was discussed, but the item was not on the agenda, so.
I think, yeah.
I would like to see if we're going to have a Rules and Procedures meeting, if we're going to place specific things on the agenda, that they be placed on the agenda, and that agenda be published to all commissioners, so, because there was a lot of things discussed, it was kind of a wide open agenda that night.
It was.
And there was a lot of things discussed, that if we don't publish an agenda, and people doesn't know what they're fixing to be voting on, I mean, we discussed going away with the, uh, Public Services Committee, I mean, a lot of different things was discussed, I think a lot of different things that you may gather and value public input, as I do, if you publish an agenda, so you can have some public input to, when we have that meeting in April, that the public know what we're going to be discussing, where we're going to be discussing it, and they can come to share their input. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Palmeroy?
Did, as a member of that, did we not vote that night to not take any action on any of those items, and as far as I'm concerned, all, we voted for all those items to be on an agenda that is not yet published for April.
That will be coming up in April, that's correct.
So, we, but we did vote to put the items that.
The items that we discussed, uh, that night, we asked the, uh, the attorney to put that on the agenda for the meeting in April.
And I'm assuming that, just like every agenda that I get every single month for every meeting, that since we voted for those to be on the agenda, that when those agendas come out, that will be on there?
That is correct.
I thought so, I just didn't know anything to change, thank you.
Mr. Graves?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, uh, I just want a clarification, when you're in the queue, on what our rule is on that, about speaking.
All right, I, I think, and, and our folks on either side of me can correct me, but I think once the question has been called, uh, if there is a second, then this body votes on that, and then, uh, if that is approved, then we automatically go to voting, and whoever's left in the queue does not get an opportunity to speak.
That's a new one, that's just been made up, I shouldn't stay here all night and want somebody to keep.
I, I guess that's sad, but have we not done that before, let people speak after?
As chairman of this, when there were one or two, when, when it came up, I asked, I said, there's one or two left, can we let those people speak? We had about eight or nine, and, and, how many, how many do we have in there, seven or eight? We had several, we had several, we had several that were still there. So.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir. Okay, uh, no one is in the queue on the Rules and Procedure, so we now go to, uh, Mr. Langford, Financial Management Committee.
Uh, yes, Mr. Chairman, two items first, we mentioned this earlier, on your, on your desk is a report on debt obligation, I asked if this be entered into the minutes, it's, uh, it, it's a form that gives information about the five and a half million dollar bond issuance, uh, and they've, the state's requested that we have this in the minutes. The, the second thing is, you have a resolution on your tape, on your desk, for adventure tourism, and this is an attempt, um, I'll summarize it, and then let the county executive speak to it, but, uh, just briefly, what it is, is, it's the state will allow us to participate in a program where different areas of the county outside the cities can designate, uh, areas devoted to specific adventure tourism activities, and if a business meets certain parameters, a five-hundred thousand dollar investment, twenty-five full-time employees, although that might change to include, uh, a similar number of part-time employees, but they would get, the business would get essentially a forty-five hundred dollar per employee tax break, so it costs us nothing locally at the county level, but it gives if a, if a company wants to build a hotel or a restaurant near, uh, one of these adventure tourism districts or inside that district, then they could, uh, benefit from the tax break, it gives an incentive to businesses to, uh, do that, also like if, in one of the more rural areas, if someone wanted to build a canoe business, or a zip line or something like that, and they wanted to meet these requirements, it would give them a big incentive to do so. Uh, I, I move that we pass this resolution.
All right, we have a motion, there's a second, second for Mr. Rain, uh, discussion, Mr. Goode?
Commissioner Langford's a hundred percent right on everything, just to reiterate the fact, there's no money in it, uh, it's a win-win, there's nothing to lose, um, joint economic development that Friday, which is impressive, most, I think everyone knows, is every city mayor, city manager, uh, and chamber folks, uh, and the only one thing that, slightly correction, is cities will participate, um, and each city will vote on that as well, but the county has to be the catalyst on that vote to the state.
Let me point out something, too, you said there was no money involved, there's no local money, there's no county money involved, it's state money for the tax, yeah, just so there's clarification there. Okay, uh, no one else in the queue, uh, there's been a motion?
Resolution is on the board, each commissioner, please record your vote. Twenty-three votes are entered, all twenty-four votes are entered, does anyone wish to change your vote? Resolution receives twenty-three affirmative votes.
And just one other point, uh, point of privilege, I just want to say thank you to all the commissioners and the public who sent notes, letters, emails about the passing of my father, I really appreciate your thoughts and prayers, meant a lot to my family, I even got a story from Commissioner Graves about my dad buying a truck from him, I appreciate those, all those, and I appreciate all your thoughts and prayers.
Thank you, Mr. Langford. Budget Committee, Mr. Goode?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, but the deliberators get the meeting, there was the number one on the item, J, was inter fund capital outlay, no, that is just.
Uh, paperwork that needs to be recorded, is it, Mr. Finance Director, does that need a vote?
Just need to be recorded.
Just recorded for the minutes, uh, any questions or objections? Mr. Chairman, fifteen oh three dash oh seven appropriation one point five, we discussed from the capital, uh, fund for half the cost of the Portland Fire Summit Emergency Management, this is what Mr. Guthrie spoke to, that it's passed unanimous, uh, and, and emergency management as well as budget, I so move.
Okay, we have a motion, uh, Mr. Goode, second for Mr. Foster, uh, no one's in the queue, so let's vote.
Resolution is on the board, each commissioner, please record your vote. Twenty-four votes are entered, anyone not voting, wish to vote, anyone wish to change your vote? Receiving twenty-three affirmative votes, resolution is approved on first and final reading.
Mr. Goode?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, fifteen oh three dash oh eight is appropriation one hundred twenty-five thousand, unassigned fund balance for inmate medical, uh, this is a, a bill that we absolutely have to pay, it's non-debatable, and we get major discounts the way we're doing it, and I so move.
Okay, we have a motion?
Second.
Second, where'd that second come from? Mr. Graves? All right, uh, discussion, nobody in the queue, all right, go ahead. We, we don't, we're not having to say anything, we're not going to vote.
Resolution is on the board, each commissioner, please record your vote. All twenty-four votes are entered, does anyone wish to change your vote? It is unanimous, Mr. Chairman.
All right, Mr. Goode?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, fifteen oh three oh nine is the appropriation of thirty-six thousand of architectural fees for the Juvenile Chancery Court, this is the renovation program, uh, from the twenty-fifteen bond, this is what was discussed, uh, last month, uh, in our meeting, uh, and the motion made, uh, to change, uh, and it's been through both EMS, budget, and, uh, ISO mode.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second, second for Mr. Foster, uh, Mr. Hen?
Did the architect that we were dealing with wind up taking his job, county executive question?
Mr. Executive?
Uh, not as, yet, Commissioner, uh, I did not, uh, as I gave a report in General Ops and Budget, I did not want to contact the architect, because under the parameters, it was amended last month, the architect wouldn't take the work, before I contacted the architect, I want to make sure that, uh, we had a new game plan, so I haven't contacted him, I was going to wait to the results of this resolution and tonight's meeting, if that answers your question.
I, I would make, I would make one comment about that, if this architect that we, if he don't wind up getting the job, we, we got, he probably did some preliminary work that we could justify paying him some for, if he don't wind up being, if he gets the job, he'll be fine, because preliminary work will go in to be part of what he's doing to accomplish the final chore, but if he don't get it, if he winds up somewhere else, we may owe him a little money for that.
Then I would think that if that happens, then perhaps the county executive could bring that information back to us, and at that time, we could act on that. Okay, uh, Mr. Rain?
Uh, yes, so this came through, uh, General Ops, um, in the, when I, almost an hour discussion we had on this, uh, it was brought to our attention that, uh, under the, um, provisions that were passed last month, um, it was going to be impossible, or virtually impossible, to find somebody that willing to do the work, um, and so General Ops passed this again, um, with the original amount in it, uh, so we can get moving on this and get the work done, and it's going to end up saving us money in the long run, in my opinion. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mo Taylor?
Do we yet have an idea what the cost of the project is going to be?
Uh, I don't think we have a, an exact cost.
Ballbarred.
Mr. Executive, you want to answer that?
It was, uh, I didn't bring the information, but we do have an estimate on the cost, of course, the only way we're going to know exactly what the cost is going to be, because it's, uh, required to be bid out, we'll have to complete the architectural plans and send it out to bid, but I believe, yeah, that was combined, I think, three ten seventy-three, but it was of like two hundred and roughly twenty-five thousand dollars for the new general sessions court, something like that, the other was about three twenty-five, is that it? Three twenty-five and then, and fifty, so three seventy-five combined, something close to that, I didn't bring the information, I presented that to the commission, though.
All right, Mr. Graves?
Yeah, I just, I just got a comment, there is some architects out there, uh, that, that I know that would have done it for some less, maybe six or eight percent, might have, would have saved us five, six, eight thousand dollars, I don't know exactly, but there was some out there that would do that, and, uh, that's just a comment, I'll call for the question.
Okay, all right, well, we'll have to take the vote, there's a second, there's a second? Nobody's in the queue, so we can, okay, here we go, we don't have to vote on that, on that.
Resolution is on the board, each commissioner, please record your vote. Twenty-four votes are entered, does anyone wish to change your vote? Receiving twenty-three affirmative votes, resolution is approved on first and final reading.
All right, Mr. Palmero, votes that we adjourned. All right, Mr. Howard, we're in queue, go ahead.
The note, uh, the item of the convenience voting did not pass, voting required a supermajority.
No. That, that was all, that was all. It was only, it was all.
Mr. Howard had a question about that. Okay, hold on, just a minute, we, we got a question, and we need to make sure we answer before we leave, make sure we're all on the same page. Mr. Howard?
This actually said it before she got up, and historically, it's always been that the legislative considerations require a supermajority, fourteen is not a supermajority, it did not pass.
Of the election commission?
It was the supermajority of the election commission, this was not a private act vote.
The legis, well, historically, they've always required two-thirds of the county commissioners, I, I just think they need to know that it did not receive a supermajority.
Okay, then they're going to research that, thank you, all right, we have a motion, we adjourn, thank you.